And that does two things, Councilman. It helps me because I know there's been some frustration when I'm not sure who is next. You know, that sort of thing. But also, it also speaks to the rubbish rules of order where you speak one time on an issue, everybody else has an opportunity to speak on it, then you can speak again. But again, it's in having some decorum and keeping order, that's what that's all about. And we've been, like I said, myself included, off and we're just trying to get back to some of the basic rules that are out there that the city adopted many years ago in how to handle their public meetings.
The only thing about that, I definitely believe in order because, I mean, how we are the representation of how we feel about the city and of course, the citizens that are watching, we want to show order because as a governing body, we want to show that we are able to conduct ourselves. As such, I'm fine with, I guess, going down the line, but at the same time, I don't want it to be a case where, you know, obviously, like if I put my hand before and you saw my hand, but then Councilman Jones, you know, considering the conversation and the way they flow, I may have something that may flow rather than Councilman Roland. And so, you know, we want to still be cognizant that, you know, if there's an order that can be recognized, you know, please recognize the order, but if you must go down the line, at least, you know, say beforehand, like, "I don't know," go down the order, or if we just help you out and say, you know, "I allow Councilman Wallace because I saw his hand for allowing him to speak," just so that we can keep a continued conversation.
We can easily be flexible with it. All we're trying to do is get some order that we have not had at all. So, no, no problem with that at all. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I agree, but I would rather all council be here, so Mr. Mayor, I move that we table item number two until the next city council meeting.
Sir, okay, no problem. It's been properly moved and seconded that we table item two until our next council meeting because members are missing. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Item three, discuss and take action to set a workshop regarding roles and responsibilities of mayor and city council members. One of the main reasons this is on here is because from the ordinances to the, as Dr. Brown mentioned, to the city charter, to our Texas Municipal League Training and that sort of thing, I've gotten a lot of requests from council members. And if it's outside the council's purview, it becomes confusing. So, I think to make sure, and where it has been suggested, a couple of people have made comments, and there are things, and I'll give you a good example. I've had a few requests that are totally out of line with the charter. To put a request that is out of line with our charter on the agenda to put before this August body is all but illegal. You can't vote against what the charter says. So, putting it on agenda might be confusing, and that's where I spoke with Attorney Kirwin and maybe he or TML or whomever, as Councilman Roland, I think, mentioned, to have some folks in who can train all of us. Because I seek to do my best, but with everything I'm doing and all hats that I'm doing, I literally make mistakes. And what I've done, on a few, more than one occasion, I've apologized, like I did at the beginning of this meeting, but I think it would be helpful because we've got several very new and very young council members who it would be helpful for you to know what you're charged to do. We're all equally elected, but we are elected to do different things. And we both need to know what they are and how they interact. But that's item number three. So, again, if maybe we need to wait, I'm okay with that for all the members to be here because the selected date that's not good for them would be counterproductive. So, if you're in line with that, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Roland.
My understanding of number three, I guess, is a little off, and I think the things that city council had asked for, city council has the right to bring concerns or questions that the citizens of this community have and want resolved and answers to. If you feel that that is your obligation to say that it is against the law, then you have the right to do that. But again, city council is elected by the citizens in the community. If they have an issue that they bring to us, our goal is to get answers to that resolved. And so, I just wanted to make sure that, to be clear.
Oh, wow.
I will move that we move item number three, well, that we table item number three until our next city council meeting.
Sir. It's been properly moved and seconded that we table item number three, discuss and take action to set a workshop regarding roles and responsibilities, should be of mayor and city council members. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And can I list the record that that was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and again, definitely we'll take the question. Item four, discuss, consider, and take action for city council members to be appointed by Mayor Allen to the following committees. Waller County Subregional Planning Committee, that's a commission, commission, Councilman Jonathan Randle, Beautification Committee, and I don't know if you all have this one on there. You showed Beautification Committee with Councilman Jones. Okay. And again, that's another part of the training, if you will, because I checked, I don't see a Beautification Committee. So, we have to, and we can do that if you will, Ms. Dickey, at the next meeting, we need to put together and have some semblance of what a Beautification Committee's functions are, because again, I can't appoint someone to a committee that doesn't exist. So, it's some of those types of things. But let me read the last one. Ordinance Committee, Councilman Wendy Williams, which she's been chairing, and Flood Committee, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Sante Wallace. And so, the record is clear, the previously, at one of the council member's suggestions, I had Councilman Roland under Emergency Committee. Well, Councilman Roland has a lot of experience, and the Emergency Committee Chief, Judge, and them, they've got that, but we've got things like Houston Galveston Area Council where, because of all the things I'm doing, I cannot get resources that we pay to be a member of like I'd like to. And that's just one example. There are a couple of other things. So, what I would ask of you, Councilman, is because you even know some of these committees better than I may, that if you would take a look at one of those like HGAC or something like that, I would love to appoint you to one where you can go and bring back useful resources that we dearly need and we need to be represented at. The other thing was, on the, and I have to ask him, I was gonna do it today, and I don't have any other opportunity to, Councilman Randle has sat for a couple of years on the Waller County Subregional Planning Commission, and I don't know if his new schedule, being a coach, allows him to do that. And still, there's a lot of information going on, what's going on in the county, that we don't get if we don't have a representative at one of these meetings. So, I wanted to start with our council members, but then there's a lot of opportunities, as Dr. Brown mentioned, for people in our community to, if nothing else, go attend a meeting, typically during the day, and even if you can't bring it to council meeting, you can get us information, and we can share it with the others. That's where we are now that we've somewhat settled. We got a lot going on out there, and the committee piece is something that now we can, you know, exhale, take a look at, see who wants to do what. And that's where that was, if that's amenable. Councilman.
So, I know on the last meeting, the agenda I was on there for, which you stated, which was the emergency, I would like to stay on that committee and any other committees like HGAC, I would like to participate too. I think when council brought this up, what we're trying to do is balance and help support things that may have not been getting the attention it needed. Beautification Committee, and when we go over this in the processes, was something that we seen that there, that connects back to our ordinances and people cutting grass and some different things, but if we have an opportunity to do a positive impact out front, that's what the Beautification Committee is about. And I think if you look at our, whether it be our charter or if it's not in our charter, we broke back to state law, the committee is just an opportunity for us to be able to say, now, once we set it up, then we get some community citizens, or we get students and we get senior citizens, as Mr., as Dr. Brown talked about, to join these committees. So, this wasn't shutting out members of the community, it was just us starting a conversation to move to that process. And so, Mr. Mayor, I would definitely like to, my name to be added back as it was on the last agenda and before prior there, to stay on the emergency committee and HGAC, I would like to do that.
It'll be a pleasure. Having you on too is twice as good to me. You got that, Ms. Dickey? So, we'll bring councilmen back, and what we need to do, we need to, at least prior to the committee appointment, and maybe, Councilor, you can assist us in this, we need to have something creating, which is council's function, Beautification Committee and what they'd like to see on it, and then I'd be glad to do the appointment. Okay? But we have to have it in place first, because following the process is important.
An ordinance that creates a committee, and that's normal, how I see it then.
Okay, that sounds fine. And, Ms. Dickey, please make a note, or Councilor, you'll send your email as to which your preference, HGAC or whatever, and then we'd gladly make that appointment as well. So, we'll hold off on these as well until we have them all set up and in place, is that okay, Council?
And I apologize, Councilman Roland, I knew you would want to do more than one, so I just wanted to make sure that I had you correct.
Thank you. Okay. So, will you move the motion?
Yes, just for the record. Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Roland. I move that we move item number four, take action for city council members to be appointed by Mayor Allen to the following committees, to our next city council meeting. Next regular city council.
I second that.
Okay, so it's been properly moved that item four, discuss, consider, and take action for city council members to be appointed by Mayor Allen to the respective committees, be tabled and added to the next meeting's agenda. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item five, discuss, consider, and take action in regards to the My Brothers Keeper Program, building a community of practice. Councilman Roland.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask that this agenda item be moved to the next city council agenda. Take the motion? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Roland, I move that we table this item, My Brothers Keeper Program, building a community of practice, to our next regular scheduled city council meeting.
Seconded that.
It's been properly moved that item five, discuss, consider, and take action in regards to the My Brothers Keepers Program, building a community of practice, be tabled until the next city council meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item six, discuss creating a youth council for the city of Purview, that's Councilman Jones' item, so with him not here, we'll just skip it.
I'm gonna speed on a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, so, listening to some citizens' comments earlier, at first, I wanna just appreciate all y'all for always expressing your concern, because we don't become a better city council or governing body unless, you know, the citizens are willing to put input on it. The idea of the youth council was to take, you know, with, let's say like 2006, like we have young men and young women in the community that, you know, want to, you know, know more about politics, whatnot. So, we saw, you know, other cities, you know, taking the youth and developing them in their leadership skill, their communication skills, and just understanding of government. And, you know, you know, me and Kendrick or Councilman Jones, we naturally, you know, we like to try to give back in that sort. So, that was the idea of youth council, but I do definitely take in consideration for the fact that because we are, you know, a community, you know, a different demographic than most other cities that have a big community, you know, we have to take everything into consideration. So, we'll definitely go back to the drawing board with that, but I truly appreciate y'all's support.
On this item, many cities have youth councils, which is a governing body for young people in their community. Now, understanding that demographics of our community, there is to engage young people in the process, I wanna commend council members for taking this on, and hopefully, they take heed to what Dr. Brown said about some of the other committees and things that they could take the opportunity. But, Mr. Mayor, I move that we move this item to our next, the item number six, to our next city council meeting. Sir, it's been properly moved and seconded that item six, discuss creating a youth council for the city of Purview, be moved to the next city council agenda. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item seven, discussion on James Muse Sewer Project with updates. This is.
Your, 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 the difference, number seven, that discuss, consider, and take action to add a K-9 unit to the police department.
I think you should put yours in the packet before.
Before we made an decision.
Yeah, before we made revisions.
No problem.
Okay.
Item seven, discuss, consider, and take action to add a K-9 unit to the police department. Chief Solomon.
Council, Mayor, citizens. Before we get started on that, let me, let me address something here about, you've been hearing about this usage, this employee using city property. It's a serious offense. It's a misuse of city property. I was called about this incident on a Saturday night, and that Saturday night, I went into my computer room and looked up.
Chief, a minute.
Hold on a second.
I need to stop you on this.
Okay.
Just because it is another agenda item and because there's some sensitive issues here, that I would ask that we stick to the K-9.
Okay, but there's been some.
You probably talked about when we do the department.
Okay, let's just, okay, I'll just leave it there, but no, we address. The K-9, we put together a committee months and months ago to look at bringing a K-9 to the city. We've looked at some incidents that occurred here in the city and what usage a K-9 would have done for us during those incidents. We've had a murder suspect who jumped out of a car one night during a traffic stop. K-9 would have been a good deal for that. We had an elderly gentleman who walked away from his house. Took us more than six or seven days to locate him, and once we did locate him, we had to bring EquiSearch in, and he was actually, it expired by that time. We looked at getting a dual, dual-purpose K-9, and so, we put together a committee. And during the course of putting that committee together, it actually worked to our advantage because we didn't want to take any money out of a city budget that wasn't allowed in city budget during this budget time. Sergeant Garrett actually found a gentleman who had a K-9. That K-9 was actually donated to us. The K-9's worth more than $5,000. It's been donated to us. The Harris County Sheriff's Department donated us $9,000 worth of training, 12-week training for our K-9 and for our K-9 handler. What's gonna, the other occurring cost would be a vehicle, we have the vehicle. The only money that we're asking to be approved for this is money that's already within our budget, and that's $4,700. And that's money that's already within our training budget. It's nothing coming out of the city's money from anywhere, we're not coming to you asking you for any money. We're asking to add something to this police department that's gonna be, that's gonna lend us the ability to do our jobs better. What I've given you on this K-9, for the K-9, is all those things that, the questions that you had. It talks about the benefits the K-9 would be to the Purview Police Department, how much this K-9 would cough, we just discussed that, the liability of the K-9. I've spoken with TML, it's not gonna take our liability any further unless we put a mortality, immortality insurance on it, which means if something happens to the dog, the dog dies, then that dog will be replaced by the limit that we discussed on that. As far as how the K-9 would be utilized, it's all within your package, how the K-9 would be utilized. The laws pertaining to any injuries sustained from, to the K-9, and also then we put policy together that guides, that put guidelines together that would protect the city, and protect the police department, and protect citizens, and our handler when it comes to K-9 policy. This program is a tremendous program to add to this, to add to this department. With this place growing, with this place getting as big as it is, it's not about just, it's not about just drugs, it's a huge, it's a huge thing when it comes to drugs, because it's a dual-purpose law. Dual-purpose meaning that this dog will not only do drug narcotics, but the dog will also go into buildings. We can let this dog loose in buildings and find suspects. We can send this dog to track burgers. We can send this dog to track if we go, like the gentleman was missing. If we'd had this dog that particular time and was able to get a sniff of his house, we could have gone out and found him before those seven or eight days were up. So, again, we're not asking the city to put any money into this. What we're asking is that with next year's budget, is that we put $6,000 into next year's budget for maintaining that dog for the year. But the $48,000 that this would have cost, it's not costing this city any of that money. It's only costing that $4,700, which is already into our training budget and into our overtime budget.
Is it $48,000, $4,700?
It's $48,000, it's what it would have cost us if we were gonna start a new program, because we're talking about equipping vehicles, we have the vehicle already. What we're buying with that $4,700 is we're buying the cages inside the vehicle, there's also an automatic snap button, if the officer's outside the car, he gets into trouble, he can hit that snap button, the door comes open, and the dog's able to get out of the car. It's also a ventilation system for the dog. That ventilation system keeps the dog at a temperature where, when he's in that car, if it gets too hot, all the windows will come down on the vehicle. The other part is to build, to build the dog a house, because the dog has to live with the K-9 handler. And that $450-some dollars is gonna be used to build the kennel at the, at the K-9's handler. We also have a kennel that's inside of here. That's where that $4,700 is gonna come in. But like I said, that $4,700 is already within our budget. We're not asking you to do anything, except for give us your blessing on bringing in K-9.
Council, questions? The chief?
Councilman Roland, chief, this committee that they've been working on for months, did you have anybody on this committee who knew of our prior, city of Purview's prior experience with bringing in cops for K-9, talking about doing this thing before?
No, I didn't, I don't know, Sergeant Garrett was on this committee, myself was on this committee, Sergeant Phillips. As far as, I talk with cops on K-9 for cops, this dog's not coming from K-9 for cops. This dog is coming from southern ground.
So, my question wasn't?
No. Can I answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
One of the issues that came up with this in previous years when we thought it was a good idea was the, what is the long-term cost on the animal, and so, the K-9 unit. So, you gave us what the breakdown is for today. Having given us the breakdown, what is the yearly or annual breakdown moving forward? And then if we bring on, if we use one of our vehicles to put this K-9 cage in, does that take one of our, a good vehicle that we can use for transport that now is only now gonna be only available for a K-9 unit, does that take that out of service? And so, what, what is that like forethought, not just for today, but for two years from now and moving forward?
Okay. As I said earlier, and I don't know if you heard me, we're asking that we put in $6,000 in next year's budget, that maintains that dog for a year. We're talking shots, we're talking food, we're talking training. It's gonna maintain all that, that $6,000. And we're asking that it goes into the next year's budget, when we start doing the next year's budget. When you're talking about the vehicle, the vehicle that this K-9 is gonna be in, that vehicle's already being utilized by that one person. That one person will use this car as an actual take-home vehicle, that one person patrols in this vehicle, that's their car that's assigned to them, that car's not assigned to anyone else. So, it won't take away from anything else that we have in control.
I guess by, so, was it, it was, if a person's on duty, they stop somebody, if they need to take someone in, that was a vehicle that they were using for transport. If we now convert that to now have the K-9 unit in that particular vehicle, does that now take that car out of service for being transported or being someone else, or is that something that you can use?
That car would be strictly used as a K-9 vehicle. You won't be able to transport in that vehicle under abnormal circumstances. In an emergency, you could transport in the front seat. But here's what happens on most traffic stops anyway, Councilman, is if I make a traffic stop and I arrest the gentleman that's in the car, normally, I don't transport him anyway. Another unit will come to transport that person to the county while I finish inventory of the vehicle. Or that, or that person will do it, then I will transport. So, there's always another, another unit that comes to do the transporting.
Council, just your questions? The chief?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Roland, I move that this item be moved to our next city council meeting, so we have an opportunity to. I make a motion that we move this agenda item to our next regular scheduled city council meeting. We just received this packet five minutes ago, and we need time to make sure that this is in the best interest of the city. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that item seven, discuss, consider, and take action to add a K-9 unit to the police department, be moved to the next city council meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
I'm ready.
Councilman Wallace.
I do wanna just address this with the citizens. As the governing body, as the people are making decisions with the, with the money that the city has, we do feel like, as a precedent, anytime we get a packet or anything the day of, we don't have time to read over it, that we should have our due diligence in being able to read it. I know with the K-9 unit, even though it sounds like a good idea, at the same time, it's not gonna be coming in like today, you know? It gives us time not only to really read over the packet, but also the other city council members to also read as well, so that whenever the decision is made, it's not like, oh, them two wasn't there, and then all of a sudden, it's all fall on us. It's so that we can govern as one at the city council. So, I do want y'all to understand that sometimes when we do table these things, it's just 'cause we literally just got the packet, pulled all these chapters just right now, and that we want to take our due diligence in reading that.
Okay. I've got an unreadiness question for chief. Chief, is anything time-sensitive on this? Because I know these are donations of thousands of dollars, the dog itself, I just wanna make sure council has that information.
It is time-sensitive, but what we'll do is, we have the dog kennelled at, at our animal control guy's place, we have the dog kennel there. Harris County's training is probably gonna start in about the next two weeks or so. I talked to them a week ago, well, last week, and their training is probably gonna start in the next couple of weeks or so. That 12-week training, it's kinda time-sensitive there, because it's, it's more, if you, we were to go out and get that training at any place, it would cost us $9,000 for that handler in the dog. We're getting 12 weeks of training absolutely free. I understand what council's saying, wanting to read that packet, that's the reason why I gave you the packet. I would have liked to given it to you a few days ago, but we were trying to make sure we had all of our ducks in a row. So, I understand you wanting to read it. I think it has everything in it that you'll, that you'll need to, that you'll need to see, that this will be a good program. But we'll try and hold those things off with, with the county, we'll call them tomorrow and again, and see exactly when that training is gonna start. But yeah, so.
Have all the information, 'cause of our discussion, there was a date and that sort of thing. Councilman Roland.
In my unreadiness, I think, I think one of the.
Hey, please, please.
One of, Councilman Wallace talked about it, but again, we just received this packet five minutes ago, and that was the reason. But in one of the statements you just made, have y'all already received this, part of the issue is also, have y'all already received this dog? And so, you're saying you're, we're boarding the dog somewhere else, and now you're coming to us after we, we already made whatever, now you want training, and now you want us to approve it. So, I'm not, I'm missing something.
Here's, here's what happened. We didn't expect this to go this fast. We, we got in touch with this gentleman, and we asked him if he knew of a K-9 dual, dual train, and he says, "I'll, I'll see if I can find you now." And he says, I'll, uh, I'll see if I can find you now. I get a call one Saturday, oh, four days after talking to him, says, I've got your dog. Okay, uh, I'm not willing to turn out a dog that would normally cost us eight, nine, ten thousand dollars. And so what I did, I said, okay. So here's the deal, Councilman, uh, that, that dog is being housed at that place. If you guys decide that this is not a program you wanna do, we can have that dog taken back to the sky. We have no obligations with this. They've given us a, they've given us the sheet where they donated to us, and I'll give you that, uh, I'll give you that copy where they've signed this over as a donation to the, to, to the City of Prairie View and, and Prairie View Police Department. But if this, if this is something you guys decided not to do, then hey, absolutely, we'll send that dog back away and we'll start all over again.
Uh, uh, chief, also to, to, uh, to, to your benefit, I remember we had talked about it and you were going to at least memo or FYI council at the last meeting, but we didn't have the meeting.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So I just wanted, uh, Councilman, to know that you were, as you had, um, initial information, bringing it to them because you were working with the guy like you were working with the story.
Yeah, we've been, we've been doing this for several months. And as the mayor says, last meeting, we were gonna bring this up and after not enough people showed up, um... No, I was just gonna be a part of my report last week because we hadn't gotten this far. Uh, but we didn't get, uh, we didn't get full counsel, uh, here. So it would have been, and I probably wouldn't have got the package to here. But I understand what you're saying when you're talking about the packet and wanting to read it. You're, you're absolutely right.
So, so before, before we make the decision, so are you saying that if it's not approved at this point in time, there is a possibility that the dog will be sent back?
No, no. I'm saying this, I'm not saying, I'm saying this, if you guys don't approve it, then we have no obligation to, uh, we can send the dog back. In other words, we didn't pay any money for it. Uh, these people are trainers. They always, they always have room for their dogs, their animals, and, and so it's, it's not, it's not a big deal for them. We can just say, look, we've, uh, we've decided against the program and just send it back. But no, we don't, we don't have any obligation to keep it at this point.
And the training date, chief, did you?
We haven't, we haven't got the training date.
I'm just looking at it in relation to when our next city council meeting is in two weeks.
When I talked to the county, I talked to Harris County and they told us that we could